Thanks, everyone, for joining. Notice is hereby given that the City Council Committee on Ordnances, Licenses and Legal Affairs will hold a committee meeting on Thursday, March 3 at 6:00 p.m. via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 for the purposes of taking action on the matters listed below. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, matters not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the City of Salem's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via a remote participation platform called Zoom. Members of the public at our parties with the right under requirement to attend this meeting may access the remote participation meeting through any one of the following ways. Click on the link, post it in the agenda to join the meeting, password 875597. Go to the website link, https://zoom.us/join and enter webinar ID number 886-9038-5638, followed by the meeting password noted above if necessary. By telephone, participants can dial a toll-free phone number at 888-475-4499 to join the meeting when prompted. Enter webinar ID noted above and follow the instructions to join the meeting. City Council Committee on Ordnances, Licenses and Legal Affairs met remotely via Thursday, March 3 at 6:00 p.m. for the purposes of discussing ordinance to increase protection and conservation for the wetlands and number 54 ordinance amending section 110(c) noncriminal disposition for wetlands. Notice that this meeting was posted on March 1, 2022, at 8:01 a.m. This meeting is being recorded. In attendance are Councillor Dominguez, Councillor Varela and Councillor Cohen of Ola. Absent is Councillor Presniewski. Also in attendance are Councillors Havworth, Councillor Merkel, Councillor Watson-Fell and Councillor McLean. We also have from the City of Salem in attendance from the Planning Department, Tom Daniel, Tom Devine and Kate Kennedy. And also in attendance from Beals and Thomas, Andrew Gorman and Stacy Minahan. If I said this correctly. And we also have the city solicitor, Beth Renard, with us this evening. So, thank you, everyone. It's a big group, so I appreciate everyone taking the time to attend tonight and help Ola walk through this new wetlands ordinance that we have in front of us. I'm saying new because we saw the redline version and it looks, it looks pretty much new to me. Lots of, lots of redlines if you look at the, the markup version itself. I did speak with Tom, both Toms actually earlier, earlier in the week to go over how we can kind of run this meeting and go through this meeting. And I have requested a, an overview for the Ola Committee as well as the other councillors that are here to get a snapshot, I guess, of some history of how we got to where we are and then what we have in front of us before we dive into the review of the ordinance itself. We do have the city solicitor with us, but she does have a hard stop at seven. So I'm assuming if we have any additional follow-up comments for her, we will just have to follow up outside of the, the meeting. But I wanted to note that before we got into conversation. Anyone have any questions or concerns before we jump into this this evening? Cool. Okay. Well, Tom, I could pass this on. I don't, not, I mean, I think everybody that is a panelist here this evening can share their screen or start, start a presentation if, if there is one, but feel free to, to take it away.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm just going to speak for a quick second and then turn things over to Tom Devine. I really just wanted to thank, take a quick minute to thank the folks that have been working so hard on all this. So we've had a really strong working group that's been very thoughtful in discussing and working on this ordinance over the past year. So that's Councillor Mercillo and Councillor McCarthy, Greg St. Louis and Dan Richardelli from the Conservation Commission, Kurt Reader and Sarah Tarbet from the Planning Board, Barbara Warren from Salem Sound Coast Watch, Steve Feinstein from Science Associate, Susan Jokelson from SAFE, Gail Kubrick from CERC, and then Dennis Klobert, who's a resident in Salem. You know, we, we, we're so fortunate to have volunteers on our boards, but then to have board members as well as other community members volunteer additional time to do additional work, just wanted to share that appreciation. Also, the work of the team from Beals and Thomas, which has been fantastic. And Tom Devine and Kate Kennedy have done a great job. Tom's managed this project throughout. I just really want to acknowledge Tom and all of his work on this ordinance to get us where we are today. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, councillor. I just want to show what we have for an agenda in mind tonight based on our conversation with Councillor Riccardi earlier in the week. I'd like to give a brief introduction and then turn it over to Stacy Minahan and Andrew Gorman to give an overview of the proposed changes to the ordinance. And I also want to recognize Mary-Kate Schneowice, a member of Beals and Thomas's team who has been involved throughout the process, who's not here tonight. But I, I do think that we'll be spending most of our time tonight taking comments and questions from the council and also public comment. So just a little bit of background on our process. Because wetlands protection is a very complex technical topic, updating our local wetlands policies required a pretty robust outreach and educational effort. Experts who can not only help draft the ordinance, but also communicate the, the technical elements of the ordinance to people of all levels of knowledge, and it also took time. So we've been developing this ordinance for over a year now, and it was driven by our very engaged working group that met nine times over the past year. And I second Tom Daniel's appreciation for their work and their, their dedication to this initiative. Public outreach has been extensive. We held four public forums, not just to take input, but also to provide some education on wetland science and the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. And I know that several members of this council attended some of those forums. We also had a, a public survey, an online survey, and maintained an interactive project page where we posted all of our project documents. So the resulting product of this process led by the strong working group where we had outside expertise and robust public engagement is a draft ordinance based on wetlands and climate science, example ordinances from other communities, Salem's unique natural and built environment, and the community's vision for how it wants to protect its environment. So after this, this long and pretty intensive and extensive process over the past year, I'm, I'm very excited to be here tonight to present the draft ordinance and hand it over to Andrew and Stacy to provide an overview of the changes.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you so much for the introduction for me and Stacy. And on behalf of Beals and Thomas, I just want to continue to express our gratitude for the city and city councillors for continuing to involve us in this exciting process. So kind of jumping into the, the current ordinance, one of the first steps of this project was to look at what we have in place today. What does the existing ordinance tell us about wetlands protection? And one of the biggest questions we had to ask ourselves is how does this differ from the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act? And one of the answers that we landed on was not entirely too much. There are some things that are unique about the current ordinance from the current state law. For example, the Salem ordinance currently applies 100-foot buffer zone to the 100-year floodplain. That's something that's unique and distinctive about the ordinance, and we have carried that through in our draft. However, operationally and structurally, there isn't a whole lot of guidance that differentiates the current ordinance from what's already in place by state statute. Another thing that was quite evident early on in the process, as Tom alluded to, is there's a driving force to include some consideration for climate change adaptation and mitigation and incorporating that somehow into the way in which we talk about wetland resource areas. So the current ordinance doesn't do that, and the existing Wetlands Protection Act doesn't necessarily provide us with that guidance. So that was one of the big points we wanted to address early on in the process. And looking at the structure of the current ordinance, we saw an opportunity to also improve structure and verbiage. Something that I've called attention to is that we lack a distinct purpose and jurisdiction section for the current ordinance. That's something that those of us that go out in the field and flag wetlands, we, our first stop is to look and see if the municipality has any distinct or unique definitions of what a wetland resource area is. So it has large regulatory implications, both in the permitting process and the delineation side. And certainly the residents want to know, you know, how do we interpret the spirit of the ordinance? So we really engage with the operational language as well. So kind of jumping into our proposed overview of the changes, one of the big things we really discussed was adding climate change adaptation and mitigation as a resource area value. Massachusetts is sort of unique in that we don't necessarily regulate wetland resource areas there by the physical manifestations of the land. We regulate the interests and values that these wetland resource areas provide us. For example, a public or private water supply, flood control, those are resource area interests that are analogous to those stated in the act. But we've gone a step further and included climate change adaptation and mitigation as a distinct resource area value. And as I alluded to in the last slide, we've established a jurisdiction section. We've included vernal pools as separate and distinct resource areas. We'll get to that in a moment. We've expanded the definition section quite a bit as an ordinance becomes more complex and has more moving parts, we need additional definitions which add clarity and sort of interpretation structure to the document. And one thing that the current ordinance does not have is some sort of waiver mechanism or standards that, what the burden of proof is when an applicant needs to get relief to that 100-foot buffer zone to a, a flood zone, for instance. So we've created a very, you know, rigorous waiver test that applies to land use activities. So kind of at a very high level glance, I call attention to the 100-foot buffer zone. This is a jurisdictional limit that's applied to most wetland resource areas. Rivers are a little bit different. They're afforded a 200-foot riverfront area in some circumstances, but I just wanted to call attention to this because some people were concerned that the 100-foot buffer zone was going away. It's being carried through in this iteration. It will continue to be that jurisdictional review area. But our next two lines, this is something that we're doing a little bit differently. The Wetlands Protection Act doesn't necessarily give us instruction for how we interpret land disturbing activities within the 100-foot buffer zone itself. It's up to the commission to decide what the appropriate disturbance is or distance between a wetland and a land use activity before it becomes an impact that is nonpermissible. So this adds a little bit more structure to that decision-making process, defining no disturb zones and mitigation zones, which we'll talk about in a little bit. And we also extend protections to isolated vegetated wetlands. So wetland, again, Massachusetts has a lot of nuance to it, and not all wetland resource areas are currently regulated. Bordering vegetated wetlands are those which are contiguous to streams, ponds. They have a, a bordering connection to a surface water that's defined by the regulation. So we've expanded that to include certain isolated vegetated wetlands that pass criteria that is, you know, set forth by MASTIEP for BBWs. We've extended protection for vernal pools in the new draft, and we'll talk about that in a moment. And again, we've included climate change, some process for applicants to go through and demonstrate how they factored this in, whether it's sea level rise or future storm events. When they go through the notice of intent process, there's a structure of questioning that project proponents now need to engage with and have the burden of demonstrating to a conservation commission that they've thought through this process. So vernal pools, one of the key features of this ordinance update, they, they're not necessarily regulated themselves and under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act or the current ordinance. Some call it a loophole, some call it, you know, it's intentionally regulated only as vernal pool habitat. However, it is a very common thing for communities in Massachusetts, whether it's a bylaw or ordinance to capture vernal pools as separate and distinct resource areas. We arrived, I think, very early in the process that this was a right move for the Salem ordinance, given the large amount of public input and the input from the working group that we wanted to also make a similar move and capture vernal pools as a wetland resource area. So again, these are some of the most vulnerable wetlands. They are essential breeding habitat for, you know, certain amphibians, and I have a photo of a fairy shrimp up here. So we've included that in our discussion of wetland resource areas. Again, isolated vegetated wetlands, these are those isolated wetlands that don't have a connection to a surface water. So by Massachusetts regulation, they're not technically regulated unless they have a certain water holding capacity, so they're a, a land subject to flooding. So we were very careful in the way we structured this definition, just without getting too granular about it, we wanted to be careful so we're not catching every single puddle that occurs in a gravel driveway. So we've anchored the way we talk and think about the isolated vegetated wetlands based on MASTIEP's delineation criteria. And we've also had a lot of deliberation with the working group in terms of what the minimum size had to be for an isolated vegetated wetland. So we landed on that 750-square-foot threshold. So again, climate change adaptation and mitigation, a big component of what we saw from the public input. So the draft regulations that we've put forward, they will create a situation where applicants, similar to how they would respond to performance standards for work within the flood zone, there's a presumption that work proximate to wetland resource areas and Conservation Commission jurisdiction will possibly impact the wetland functions and values in terms of climate adaptation. So there's a sequence of responses and analysis that will have to be done for projects that trigger that level of notice of intent review. For example, asking a proponent to describe how the project accounts for potential future increases in stormwater runoff and how best management practices account for storm surges and extreme weather events anticipated due to climate change to the maximum extent practicable. So the, the draft regulations that have been put forth are where that sequencing currently exists. So again, looking at more of a top-down view here of those buffer zones and boundaries, 100-foot buffer zone was still going to be applied to bordering vegetated wetlands, but the middle and right example here, they will be resource areas that are proposed to be jurisdictional under this ordinance. So in the case of isolated vegetated wetlands that meet that certain size threshold, they'll be subject to that 50-foot mitigation zone and the 25-foot no disturbance zone. The mitigation zone is that 50-foot area, including the wetland itself, so the innermost portion, that would require some additional mitigation if a proponent is proposing land disturbing activities that close to a wetland resource area. And then the no disturbance zone is sort of the more intense version where land use activities would be generally prohibited except in certain circumstances or where a waiver is absolutely deemed necessary. So th, these are based on the foundation that the closer a land disturbing activity is to a wetland, the more likely it is to have an impact on the wetlands' functions and values. But again, as I said earlier, the Wetlands Protection Act doesn't really give us a whole lot of guidance in how we should interpret the way that space is brokered. I will say that from my experience with the Salem Conservation Commission, the exposure that we have to them through this process, they do a great job of interpreting that Massachusetts statute and coming up with productive ways with consultants that are before them of pushing land disturbances to the outskirts and even outside of the buffer zone to the extent possible. However, this will give that, those decision points a little bit more regulatory structure and fortify that decision-making process. So this is kind of a, more of a top-down view in the, the bottom right, we have that 100-foot buffer zone, the, the state jurisdictional line, the 50-foot mitigation zone, the intent being if you need to do work within there and it won't alter or adversely affect the wetland resource area, the commission can ask for mitigation, whether it's the management of invasive species or can we preserve other green space elsewhere on site? It enhances that decision-making process a little bit more and gives the commission a little bit more latitude with those interactions. And then the no disturbance zone is intended to be sort of the hard stop before impacting the wetland resource area, except in extreme cases or some cases that may be exempt, like passive walking trails, things like that. And some additional items of note, I mentioned the waiver criteria. We have very specific standards that we wrote into the, the ordinance. We didn't want a situation where every project is going to need a waiver and every project is sort of entitled to a waiver. The idea is that it's intended to be the highest burden of proof that a project would have to meet to have a waiver to those standards. Something else that was kind of unique about the current ordinance was the appeal structure. The existing ordinance was written in such a way where an appeal to a decision made under the current ordinance would be appealed to city council. Whereas most communities in Massachusetts, the appeal structure is the appeal of a local ordinance is to the court of competent jurisdiction. So we've kind of adjusted the language with some input from the city solicitor to make sure that we're in line with best practice. Very few communities still have that language in place, and it's usually communities where the Board of Selectmen, again, a different form of government, also functions as the Conservation Commission. So I think we're kind of bringing that up to contemporary standards. There's also some vagaries in the Wetlands Protection Act where the definition of what is a bank, what is a stream are a little bit nebulous. For instance, a stream that flows into a wetland is not jurisdictional if it's up gradient of the wetland, but it's jurisdictional if it, if it's exiting the wetland. So we've provided some clarifying language to capture some of those streams that would have otherwise been non-jurisdictional, but we also were careful to include language that would, you know, exempt certain like man-made ditches and things like that. Again, the, the no disturbance zone and the mitigation zone are purposefully larger for vernal pools. This is something that the working group felt very strongly about, and we certainly understand vernal pools are some of the most sensitive resource areas because of their ability to provide seasonal breeding habitat for rare species. And another thing that the current ordinance does not have is some language as to whether or not we carry over that minor activity exemption, which is a little bit granular for this conversation, but it's something that exists in the current Wetlands Protection Act, and it's unclear if it, if it's intended to carry over with the current ordinance. There's a school of thought where the ordinance is silent on it, therefore it's allowed, or the ordinance is silent on it, therefore it's disallowed. So some activities may be happening surreptitiously within that buffer zone. So this is to, to clarify that they are recognized, but they do require some sort of municipal inter, not intervention, but some notification to the municipal, appropriate municipal board when going through that process. And I just wanted to include a slide with our contact information one more time. Those who have attended the public meetings have had access to this, but we want to open ourselves up to any questions the public may have, and this is a great way of contacting us, both on the city side and us at Beals and Thomas. And thank you again for, you know, continuing to evolve us in this process. We're very enthused by the idea of the City of Salem really kind of stepping into a new phase of their ordinance. So I'd like to open the floor back up to the city councillors.
Thank you so much, Andrew. That was very helpful. And you kept it condensed in the requested timeframe, which I know is quite a challenge. So I appreciate that. So we will go to questions from the council. Councillor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Riccardi. Through you to Beals and Thomas, thank you guys so much for attending this. The presentation was awesome and very clear, so thank you. My question is concerning how are the existing resource areas being established? Is this from existing GIS maps? I mean, if so, my concern is that these resource areas, specifically the isolated resource areas, may not be as accurate as they are established on the map. So that's my concern, my first question, only because, you know, if we're going to be making these more strict, these, this ordinance stricter, do we really know and can establish where the resource areas are? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Is the intent for us to answer the, the questions I should have asked beforehand, but we're certainly happy to provide some additional context. And again, that's a great question, and that's something that we run into quite a bit as consultants, especially when comparing GIS maps to, you know, what we're actually seeing on the ground. I will start the answer by saying GIS mapping of wetland resource areas is grossly underrepresented. And the intent is for the new resource areas, the specifically isolated vegetated wetlands and vernal pools, they would be subject to field delineation. So when a project proponent has work on their site, they have the onus of performing the due diligence to make sure that they're, they're delineating state jurisdictional resource areas and locally jurisdictional resource areas. So those of us that practice wetland science in Massachusetts, you know, it's part of our playbook to, before we even hit the ground, make sure we've interpreted the ordinance or the bylaw, depending on the community that we're in. And then the wetland line that is presented to the Conservation Commission, if it's all done, you know, according to best practice, is based on a field delineation of those wetland resource areas. So generally, not that I throw GIS maps out the window, but there are a certain level of planning that they afford, but it, it's not, not something that we can go through the permitting process with, but thank you.
Thank you, Chair Riccardi. Last week, I sat through my second seminar forum done by the Boston Harbor Group, which is developing something similar. And when I got through, Councillor Mercillo was on that as well, webinar. I thought the more I learn about wetlands, the more I know nothing about wetlands. And your summary was really excellent because it, it really capsulized things that I, I was confused about. I want to thank you for the inclusion of the climate change, you know, portion. Everything else, I feel very strongly is, is positive, especially, you know, the added resources. But what I'm unclear about, if you could answer that, Andrew, is how CONCOM or the city would analyze, you know, changes in climate change forecasts when evaluating anything in front of them.
Yep, that, that's an excellent question. So one of the moves that that language in the ordinance does is puts the, the burden on the project proponent to demonstrate the ways in which their project accounts for potential flood events, you know, future storm scenarios. So for example, if, are they using the most up-to-date rainfall data? Are, are they proposing a sewer line through an area that may not, may not be subject to flooding now, but could be subject to flooding, you know, 20 to 30 years out as those, you know, flood zones are being adjusted and looked at through FEMA? So the first thing the ordinance does is it puts the burden on the proponent to explain that their decision-making process and the analysis that they performed. And then the commission, then through the notice of intent process, makes a determination as to whether or not that analysis is sufficient.
And if I may just add to that with an example along the coast, which might help because it is challenging to think about, okay, well, what information is going to be presented? You know, what do they need to consider for that? So, you know, salt marsh migration is the clearest example, I think, the easiest to think about in terms of if there's a project proponent proposing something on a property that has salt marsh, are they proposing the project such that in the future with sea level rise and salt marsh migration, that salt marsh won't be able to migrate landward? Or have they allowed for a future transition zone? So to me, that's kind of the clearest example of the types of things that a proponent should be thinking about for how a property will function in the future and how their project will impact resource areas in the future.
Thank you for that. I do want to note real quickly that Councillor McCarthy joined us. I, I requested via email, but I just would like to make it, I, I thought Tom was sharing his screen earlier. This presentation was great, and if it could be shared electronically with us afterwards for filing and posting, it would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
I also was not aware, there were so many types of wetlands. Do we have any other questions from the committee? Councillor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Riccardi. My question, and I somewhat answered it when I was reviewing the ordinance, but when it comes to emergency situations concerning wetland areas and emergency response, and I know it says it's up to the conservation agent to make the determination and then obviously go back to the Conservation Commission afterwards. How, how much authority does that conservation agent have? Is it like a phone call and basically yes, do it that night or start work? Or is it? Or is it a formal process of paperwork and documentation?
Yep. So excellent question. Under the current state act, and I think the ordinance is gesturing as much towards that as possible, the process is it's up to the conservation agent or in absence of a conservation agent, the chairperson of the Conservation Commission to respond to the an emergency situation within twenty four hours. I mean, Stacy, please correct me, it might be twenty four or forty eight hours. I I forget the exact citation, but there's a a specific timeframe in place. Otherwise, it's considered automatically recognized as an emergency. And that is a very unique portion of the act. But when we think about waterline breaks and sensitive areas and things like that, those are generally reserved for those types of of interactions and extreme weather events, things of that nature.
Any other comments or questions from the committee? We also have in front of us tonight the second piece as well, which is the enforcement and the fines related to the new ordinance. I would want to open that up to the floor too, if the committee have any has any questions on that. Quiet group tonight. Counselor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Riccardi. Concerning the fines, I saw those fifty dollars, one hundred dollars, two hundred dollars. Is that compacted each day of an offense? Or how is that working as far as defenses go?
If I could suggest that Beth Renard take that question.
Those are separate offenses per day, generally unless it's something that the conservation agent gives notice that there is a violation and knows that that the remedy may take a couple of days, they may say by second to date. If that is not done, then that then that would be a subsequent offense. Let's say they gave them three days to resolve, whatever it might be. Maybe the water hay bales, the hay bales up. If those that wasn't done within that time period, then the next offense would go to step two and then step three, and then the step three just multiplies.
If I may, sorry, I had a follow up question to that. Sorry, Chair Riccardi. Concerning that, let's say a resident has had an offense and they're looking to get a delineation report from a wetland scientist. Would that be honored within that timeframe of looking for someone to give a delineation report? And not having fines throughout the day be honored, or is that something just completely not reasonable? I don't know.
In my experience, that would be honored. Tom Devine can speak to that as the former conservation agent, but in my experience, yes, that would be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask, I think it's Andrew that's sharing the screen, you might so it can easily see. Andrew, would you mind? Thank you. Counselor Watsonville?
Thank you, Chair Riccardi. Not being a member of the committee, so through you to everybody else on the call. I think for my part, and I did attend a couple of the the wetlands forums. And I think one of the big questions that is out there for me is about process, which kind of speaks ends up speaking to enforcement, I think, a little bit further down the line. So if we were to walk through a scenario for a resident who may own a property with border border lands that they're not maybe not even aware of. One of the big questions I had was how do I even know, right? I know, and this is that question about burden of proof and definitions and the Conservation Commission and all of that. But could we walk through just like a real life case scenario maybe on that could put this ordinance into practice for me? And for anyone else listening in, in a really sort of step by step basis, that would be really helpful.
I I can I can take a stab at an example if and then we can larger discussion if Tom wants to join in Stacy as well. So let's say we we have a scenario where a property owner, let's say I own a small piece of property in Salem and I have a isolated vegetated wetland that is going to be jurisdictional under this local ordinance. And I also have, sorry, go ahead. Yep.
Sorry to interrupt. That's my point right there. How do I know?
E- exactly. So in many cases, let's say that I don't know anything about wetland resource areas. I bought this property, but I also have a backhoe and I know that I have this area that floods in my backyard. I can take care of it with some gravel. So I go ahead, I put some gravel down, I I have my neighbors over for barbecue, I tell them all about how I fix this problem, and one of them is a little bit more keen on well, and you know, discussions than I was with my property. So unfortunately, the the burden of that responsibility does lie on the landowner. What whether it's if it's a state jurisdictional wetland, they would still have that same burden. In in this case, in 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 my experience across Massachusetts, and this is actually written in the Mass DEP Wetlands Enforcement Manual that a lot of us rely on for interpreting enforcement situations. The first step is always to foster voluntary compliance. So while we as landowners, we can't say that we were ignorant, therefore, you know, we've absolved ourselves responsibility. But in most cases, I think if I went to Kate Kennedy, the current conservation agent and said, I just, you know, found out I have an issue, you know, one of my neighbors, either they reported me or I'm self reporting. You know, what do I need to do to fix this, you know, rather than immediately initiating fines, there's usually an enforcement process. An enforcement order is really a Swiss army knife. It can compel compliance, it can establish fines, and it can also establish a pathway to compliance, giving you, you know, a certain amount of days to work with a professional to get mitigation together and things like that. So in most cases, it's still going to be the the landowner's responsibility. But if it's a state jurisdictional wetland, they would still have that burden both to the local Conservation Commission and to Mass DEP. But I'm going to segue and allow Tom Devine to also speak because he has his hand raised.
I would add that if somebody either truly doesn't know that there's a jurisdictional area on their property or is being willfully ignorant. If that person is doing work and applies for a building permit in our system, there's a spatial element where if it is within a jurisdictional area of the Conservation Commission that's mapped approximately through GIS maps, it's not perfect, but it does catch things. It will trigger the conservation agent to check on it. So that's one way it's captured if an owner doesn't know. And that's been an improvement in recent years with new permitting software we've been using, and it's allowed fewer projects within conservation jurisdiction to fall through the cracks. But you might ask, what if somebody does some work and they're not applying for permitting that they should be applying for? That's the same enforcement challenge that you have if somebody's building an addition on their house and they're not applying for the building permits they need. We might get a complaint from a neighbor, a member of the Conservation Commission, some city staff might see it, and then the Conservation Commission and the conservation agent would engage the owner.
Chair Riccardi, I one follow on question, if I may. Thank you. I think the other part of that question then is as as the climate continues to change, right, and as the wetlands move, which they will over time, how do we plan for the implementation and enforcement of this ordinance over long periods of time when we may see our properties changing? Right? How do we support our residents in that way?
Well, in in one example, every so many years FEMA updates their flood maps and the flood zones are a jurisdictional area for the Conservation Commission. Whenever those are updated, we put those updated maps into our permitting system. So anyone pulling a building permit within those areas that may be expanding because of climate change, that would be captured. And also whenever DEP updates their their approximate wetland boundaries GIS data, we can include that in the the system too. I I guess I'd also add that that's just you know, municipal administration of its its ordinance, but through this process of developing the ordinance, the outreach process we've done has built a lot of awareness about Conservation Commission jurisdiction in the community. And I think that there's fewer homeowners who can claim to be ignorant that they may have wetlands on their property.
Or that someday their property will be a wetland. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Merkel?
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Riccardi. Not being a member of the committee, just allowing me to speak. So to to that point, it it sounds like it's set up that the city can can work with homeowners, like to the point that things do change. It's a very fluid situation with climate change. So somebody put a shed up on their property and it was, you know, right on the line and then, you know, five years later, it it's not in an allowable place. But you know, do do with the city, you know, work, they don't, they wouldn't backtrack and say, well, now that wouldn't be allowed and it would be an issue for a homeowner or anything. And also before I have you answer the question, I do want to thank the people that worked very, very hard on this. It's 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 really something to be proud of, and I appreciate that.
This may be a question for Beth, but I I believe that would work just like somebody building a house in the nineteen twenties that does not violate any zoning ordinance at the time. Zoning ordinance comes into play in the nineteen seventies and the house becomes nonconforming, but it's a legal nonconforming use. So no new zoning is going to tell an existing property owner, they can't have their house there. I think that's how it would work with the changing wetlands ordinance.
And I I may add with the building code, there are a certain number of years where that go by where an illegally illegally constructed addition, for example, is allowed to stay. And in a lesser time, the building inspector may direct them to apply for variance. So it's very, you know, time fact specific.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to to Tom or Andrew, whoever feels best equipped to answer the question, but I would like to ask what are some sort of best practices that people can engage in terms of engaging resources for addressing the question of mitigating climate change, of mitigating sea level rise, these these are not these are not hard metrics, right? The metrics that we know are sort of going to change over time. And we have sort of put it on the Conservation Committee to work with people to make appropriate adjustments, but we haven't really identified any bodies or standards or 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 particular resources that they can watch over time in order to help guide that conversation. I'm thinking about this at the moment in contrast to a municipal ordinance, a a green building ordinance that we just that we just talked about where it was very good about establishing standards about what we were talking about, right? We're asking people to create a building and these are the standards we're looking to, these are the bodies we're talking about. So I'm curious if there are any similar resources that would be available that we could that we could put into the ordinance and say the Conservation Commission can watch these over time. Or if we should consider putting in some sort of time based study component and saying, you know, maybe once a decade or something, we need to go out there and look and and determine what are the things that are making sense for us to to use as bellwethers. Hope that makes sense.
I'd want to ask Andrew or Stacy to to take that, and if this may be the right place to talk about how the implementing regulations build on the ordinance.
Yep, thank you, Tom. So it's 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 a difficult process and I am not going to pretend that sometimes conversations around climate adaptation can appear nebulous when we don't have very specific concrete metrics to to play off of in some cases. So one of the things to use the ordinance as an example is looking at how your project has accounted for future flood zones and specifically how one of the things the commission could ask is, you know, we know the Woods Hole Group has published, you know, sea level rise modeling, I think for the city of Salem, and that could be a great tool to point people in the direction of, have you accounted for sea level rise scenario in the in the twenty fifties and the twenty sixties? You know, how how close to your is your project to coastal flood zone? So there are some resources available. Those, I think, were intentionally external to the ordinance because some of them were were done by separate consultants and, you know, it it's un- unclear if the city wants to adopt as as its own entity, a standardized, you know, flood zone that is separate and distinct from the FEMA lines. I know that there's, you know, ongoing conversations about that. But I think even putting together a guidance document that's independent of the ordinance might be something that would be incredibly helpful in the process, to your point, to help render the process less vague. If I can frame it that way.
Yeah, and if I can add, so the ordinance, as Andrew kind of alluded to, is intended really to set the framework for what is subject to the commission's jurisdiction and what does the commission care about? What are the values that are protected? And then it provides, you know, some additional detail and definitions and things like that, but it that's really the intent of the ordinance. And then the regulations are how that ordinance gets implemented and the regulations go one step further and set what are called performance standards essentially. So if you meet these performance standards, then you are presumed not to affect the resource area values, for example. And then a guidance document like what Andrew said would be sort of an informal, much more easily updated, you know, resource list almost of, okay, well, here's some flood mapping that's available or and it doesn't even need to provide specifics if the city doesn't have a preference, but it could say you should look at future flood mapping, you know, here's some ideas on how you address these things. So I agree, I think a guidance document would be helpful, but if it's, in my opinion, better to not include in the ordinance, because if it's in the ordinance and then the science changes, you go through this whole process again, just to update that guidance piece of the ordinance. So that's why it was external to that.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Andrew.
If I may, I I don't mean to interject, but to to Tom's point too, I just want to make sure that everybody understood the the difference between the ordinance and the regulations. So if if anybody's unclear in that, we can talk about it a little bit more, but the ordinance is what's adopted by city council and then the implementing regulations are what are adopted by the Conservation Commission separately that explain this within the scope and extent of the the ordinance in a little bit more granular detail, fleshing out those performance standards and specifically accounting for, you know, additional free boarding within a flood zone, for example, is something that we're looking at. So I but I won't go into too much detail. Thank you, though.
Thank you. I appreciate the thoughtful answers. Chair, if I may ask an additional question, this one relating to the fine schedule, the fee schedule rather. And and this I would I would ask through you to Beth. Point of point of clarification about the about the fee schedule, I see that there is a increasing fines for first, second, and third offense. Is that is that sequential in escalation? So in other words, is it on day one, the fine is X and on day three, the fine is X times two? Or is that the number of instances within the boundaries of a property, right? You have three items that are in violation on this property and that constitutes offenses, one, two, and three.
Generally incremental. So Tom or Kate sent out a notice, hay bales are missing from the site. Three days to fix it. She goes out, a week later, hay bales still aren't there, another violation. Gives another notice. Couple more days she goes out, hay bales still aren't there. If they haven't, if if it hasn't been any communication back to the department of, well, I can't get the hay bales or whatever it might be, then those fines would continue to grow up to the hundred and fifty. That's my experience with it. Tom can correct me if I'm wrong.
I think that's right.
And actually, if I may, just a follow up clarifying question. So if you have a property that has you know, four offenses, four different offenses, the hay bales are missing, there is siltation in the water and, you know, whatever else has gone on. Is it a first fine four times or is it kind of your property is out of compliance?
In my experience, it has been if there are multiple violations, different aspects of the ordinance, then you we have the ability to do then you we have the ability to do separate violations. I don't know that we generally do that, though, Tom. You can speak to that. I haven't seen that happen.
So updating the ordinance for non criminal penalties is a housekeeping element of this. The existing ordinance does not have a clear mechanism for issuing fines. So although the commission has successfully used fines for enforcement in the past, there was the risk that upon appeal, the fines would be struck and striked, shut down.
The ordinance does have a catch, has a catchall of $50 per offense for anything that's not sort of enumerated in chapter one. So that's, I think, what the Concom was relying on in the past.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't think I understood that last point of clarification about the the fee schedule perhaps not being enforceable. Can you explain that a little more deeply?
Tom was saying that the Concom in the past had issued fines and wasn't aware where the jurisdiction for that came from, or the authority with it, of which that dragged. But the ordinance does have a catchall that says that any ordinance violation is subject to a $50 fine. So even though it's not spelled out like this will do, there is a catchall in the ordinance.
Okay, I got that.
Current ordinance, correct?
So, you know, just thank you for that clarification, Beth and Tom. So I would just say in conclusion to that question, I'd really like to see the fine schedule increased for subsequent offenses. I think we've been having a lot of conversation about impact on residents. But I think a lot of the concern that I have heard from the community on this question has been about the behavior of commercial exercises, right, developers and the things of that nature. So knowing that we have you know, only a certain capacity for inspection of property and that, you know, we're not going to have an army of building inspectors out there policing all these properties. I'd really like to see, I'd like to see it hurt quickly and really encourage people to 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 bring themselves into compliance if they're not in compliance and do it expeditiously.
If I may, the way this is drafted, I think it says for the different levels of offense up to a certain amount. So if it were set higher, it would allow the commission to issue higher fines, but leave the commission the discretion, the discretion if they wish to issue a smaller fine when appropriate, such as for a small violation at a single family home. But it could go up to the max in the case of, say, a commercial enterprise.
Max for an ordinance violation is $300.
I was just gonna ask that. So would the max be like, I'm going to share how it's drafted right now. I hope. Can everyone see that? So this is the draft. So right now, the draft in front of us says first event, first offense 100. And you could have multiple first events. Expense ticket provided at one time. Second offense, but that's incremental, so the same offense with the second time, 150 and then third 200. And Becky, you just noted that that most of that could increase to is 300?
Right. For an ordinance violation.
I can't see. Sorry. I, 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 I agree with Counselor McLean that I feel this would be peanuts to a large large developer going in and, you know, 200 could be a drop in the bucket. But I would feel comfortable with seeing a motion to possibly raise the third. Counselor Cohen? Or Counselor?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. I'm going to move that first defense stays at 100, second 200 and third 300.
Again.
Counselor Cohen moved that. Let me write this down. First offense stays at 100, second offense goes up to 200 and third offense 300. Is that, okay. Seconded by Counselor Varela. Any discussion around that? No discussion. I'm gonna bring that one to a vote just to so the motion on the floor is to change the penalty for violations. Second offense to $200 and third offense to $300. They'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. That will motion passes. Any other discussion on the penalties? I guess. Or any other comments in general? I also haven't opened it up yet. I know we have limited time with with that. So Beth, I appreciate you staying or sharing your time as you could. Okay, sorry, I had to do that to see everyone again. Okay, I know we have some participants. If there are any members of the public wanted to make comment or had a question, please use the raise hand functionality. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Ricardi. I move that we move this to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. So let me just clarify the motion. Because we have two items in front of us this evening. So we will want to have to have two motions, one of which we did make an amendment. So we will want to possibly make a motion to recommend that the council vote favorably as amended on one of the ordinances. And then a second recommendation that the council, I'm sorry, not recommendation.
Refer.
Bear with me.
I move that we refer the ordinance with recommendate recommended amendments to the council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Bear with me for one second. Was that seconded? Counselor Dominguez? Okay, so Counselor Cohen moved that we recommend we move adoption as amended for first passage. Seconded by seconded by Counselor Dominguez. And we will do, and any further discussion? Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Varela? And myself is a yes. Okay, so that was for the the second item, number 54 in front of us, ordinance amending section 110 non criminal disposition for wetlands. So we'll go on to the first one, the ordinance to increase protection and conservation for wetlands. Counselor Cohen?
I move that we refer, okay, I'm going to try to get this right. I move that we refer to the full council to adopt for first passage.
Second, recommend for adoption for first pack passage. Second, I heard the second, sorry, didn't have my head up. Seconded by Counselor Varela. Under discussion? Counselor Cohen?
Grateful to everyone who worked on this, yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, that I must say that passes for nothing. Thank you, everyone, for getting us through this evening. I also want to echo Counselor Cohen's words of gratitude for the work and effort that were put into this. It was definitely not a small task or a small feat. I know we have all learned a lot, along with the city of Salem, have learned a lot about wetlands and vegetation and vernal pools. And we will continue to learn a lot as things change and as the the climate adapts. If you could please share electronically the presentation that was sent out tonight, I'll make sure that that's also posted. So the public can see that as well. That was great. I really, I don't know if you saw me getting close to the screen, so I could really see the details on that. But that was a really helpful visual to explain all of this very long ordinance that we have in front of us this evening. So thank you for making it manageable and digestible. Any other comments or motions this evening? Counselor Dominguez?
I also echo, thank you for everyone. Great presentation and I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, motion to adjourn by Counselor Dominguez. Your second. Counselor Varela, second. Roll call vote, Counselor Cohen?
Yep.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thanks, everyone. So just I guess housekeeping, this will be, the committee report will be at the council meeting next week. So next Thursday at seven o'clock, we will be reporting this out to the full council for hopefully a vote. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.